I'm informed of the requirements of these two rental assistance programs that we have. These funding sources are federal, so we do have to be compliant with certain things which include the lead base inspections for any units that are built before 1978. It does also require that we go out and inspect the unit and the unit must pass the HQS inspection form. And then we also want to kind of discuss the landlord participation. What are you all going to be required as a landlord to present? And a few things of that includes W9s, 1295 forms. Again, without the participation of the landlord, it makes it very difficult to have successful rental assistance programs because at the end, the tenant themselves can qualify, but if the landlord is unable to participate, then the tenant is ineligible to receive the assistance. What is the purpose of a tenant-based rental assistance? This is probably the fastest way to be able to provide affordable housing to struggling families who unfortunately may find themselves in a position where they don't necessarily have either funds or they've lost a job. So with the rental assistance, we can go ahead and assist them up to 12 months. There are certain criterias that need to be met, which we'll be further discussing in the presentation. But through rental assistance, we can also help promote businesses. At the end of the day, that's what you all are running at the same time. It's a business, right? We all want to be guaranteed that you all are going to be receiving payments in an adequate time. So eligible population, this is very key for our programs, and all of these funding sources have different requirements. So the two different programs that we're going to be discussing are what we call Home, which is a traditional program, and Home ARP. Home ARP stands for American Rescue Plan, and that was a, that was a fund source that happened as a result of COVID-19. So with traditional Home, if you have any tenants that are at the, cannot exceed the 60% income limit, so a person of one, their income cannot exceed $33,360. And a family of four, their income cannot exceed $47,640. That's for Home. For the Home ARP, their income cannot exceed 30%, so a person of one could not make more than $16,700. So when we start accepting applicants, we're going to have to streamline to see exactly which part of funding will better fit their need and which they would qualify based on the income requirement. Do you all have any questions? So the financial assistance, both of these programs will be able to assist with rental assistance up to 12 months and the deposit as well. What's going to vary and change in terms of what we will be able to provide assistance for is that for Home, I'm not sure if you all have worked with any Section 8, but what Section 8-
And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
And welcome, everybody, to tonight's City Commission meeting. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Mayor Pro Tem, Seri Hadat.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts for the opportunity to gather and serve our community. We ask for wisdom and guidance in all that we do here today. Lord, we lift up the people of Kirk County and all those impacted in the recent floodings in the face of loss and uncertainty, bring comfort to the grieving, strength to the weary, and hope to those rebuilding. Surround them with compassion, resources, and helping hands. Bless our city, our leaders, and every person working for the common good. May we act with integrity, compassion, and unity in our decisions. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. And we have one proclamation, National Parks and Recreation Month, Commissioner Samora.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. It's certainly a pleasure here to make this proclamation on behalf and for what I refer to as the Fund Department, right, Mr. Maline?
Sure.
Parks and Rec. City McAllen Proclamation, State of Texas, County Vidalgo, City McAllen. Whereas since 1985, America has celebrated July as the nation's official Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Parks and Recreation Month is a great opportunity to demonstrate the valuable benefits of local parks and recreation, and whereas local parks and recreation will celebrate all the ways they help make their communities great through conversation, health, wellness, and social equity. They not only beautify neighborhoods, but also promote opportunities for healthier, smarter, more effective, more resilient people. And whereas the McAllen City Commission encourages citizens to visit all 101 parks, recreation, and green open spaces, a perfect combination of recreation facilities, pools, trails, centers, and sports fields. Now therefore, I, Joaquin Samora, City Commissioner for the City of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me on behalf of the mayor and the Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as National Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations.
Mr. Maline? Couple of words, sir? Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, thank you for honoring today, this month is July as National Parks and Recreation Month. It is my honor to stand before you today to celebrate a special milestone, the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month. Since 1985, the month of July has been dedicated to recognize the vital contributions of parks and recreation professionals, programs, and spaces that enrich the lives of individuals and strengthens our communities. Here in McAllen, our parks and recreation system continues to be a cornerstone of community connection, wellness, and growth. From beautiful trails and green spaces to youth programs, senior activities, and fitness classes, our department ensures that every resident has access to safe, welcoming, and meaningful recreational opportunities. This year's celebration marks four decades of honoring the work that helps build stronger, healthier, and more vibrant communities. And in McAllen, we proudly carry that legacy forward. Our Parks and Recreation Team is passionate, creative, and deeply committed to service. They are the ones who plan, maintain, and inspire making a lasting impact on the lives of thousands of people every single day. So today, as we recognize the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month, I ask that we take a moment to celebrate the power of parks and to thank those who work behind the scenes and on the front lines to make it all possible. And with me today, you can see my team here that makes things possible for our community to enjoy, to enhance the quality of life for our community. So on behalf of that, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Management Team, thank you for officially proclaiming July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of McAllen. Here's to 40 years of celebration and many more to come. Thank you, and happy Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, next we have public hearings, items 1A, 1 through 6.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. So items 1, 2, 3, and 4 are the city-initiated rezonings from on Southway Road in Idella. They are, yeah, I'm sorry. Idella Park, Unit 1, 2, 3, and 4. Item number 5 is rezoning from, at 2900 Trenton Road. This is on Trenton and North 29th. They will rezone from C3L to C1. This is just to take advantage of the parking requirements. And item number 6 is a vape shop at 7913 North 10th Street. This is on 10th and Auburn, so it has, it meets a requirement, so it has no residential zone around it, so it meets the requirement.
Omar, all of these items come with favorable recommendation.
Is anybody here to speak against any of these items? Anyone here to speak against any of these items?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item B.
Item B is located at 1406 North 24th Street. This is located on the corner of North 24th and Beacon, is Zone C3. It's for a vape shop, and is allowed in the, is it allowed in this area with the CUP? The vape shop does not meet the distance requirement from the residential zone to the south, however, it got disapproval with favorable recommendation at the Planning and Zoning Commission on June the 17th.
Anybody speak against this item? Anybody here to speak against this item?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, I need a motion to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of McAllen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, we have consent agenda, items A through-
H.
H? Do we need to pull anything out? Do we need to pull anything out? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item 3.
Mayor, I would have put item 3A on the agenda, but I wanted Denny to, to close out change order number 4 and final for Camp McAllen and let you know that this project came in under budget.
Excellent.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, you're correct, this project came under budget. And so I'm here today to present in consideration approval of change order number 4 and the final reconciliation of the contract quantities. We are, due to shortening of some of the amenities there at the campground, we are getting a credit back. And so with this final payoff, we are going to be issued a credit back for the project.
Roughly $80,000.
So recommendation is approval of change order number 4 and final net deduct amount of $79,432.69 with no additional calendar days for final contract amount of $1,798,502.44 and final contract time of 252 calendar days.
Any questions?
No, but I hear that, you know, we have some more needs there, so we might have this money to, to-
Certainly look at that.
Actually, I should try to use it.
Yes, sir, that would help.
Yep.
Kind of like putting up a guardrail, maybe? I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item B.
Mayor, item 3B is consideration and approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of McAllen and Carretero, Mexico. This is an ILA. In light of the challenging times that we are having internationally and nationally, your management team, along with Juan and Daniela in our International Relations Department, continue to work hard to cultivate relationships in Mexico. We have a trip planned to go down and formally execute this agreement in Mexico in just a couple of weeks, but we are excited to present this interlocal agreement collaborative working arrangement with the entities down in Mexico in the Carretero area and to continue to really build on the good working relationship we have with them in the industries that they have there that will certainly support our local economy. So delighted that we were able to make those connections and the opportunity to work with them for-
Excellent. I think we have a great relationship with Mexico and that we can continue building it. The first thing I want them to think about when they think about the United States is McAllen. So excellent, I hear a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item 4.
Mayor, item 4 is some speed adjustments, 23rd Street from 107 to Dove. Your traffic director is here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commission, City Manager. Yes, this is a request from the Texas Department of Transportation to consider a speed limit reduction from South Highway 107 all the way to Dove Avenue. Currently, the existing speed limit within the parameters described on 23rd are 55 miles an hour to 45 miles an hour. Techside is proposing to reduce the speed limit to a gradual 50 miles per hour, 45 miles per hour, then 40 miles per hour to match everything south of Dove, that is 45, 40 miles per hour. The Traffic Operations Department studied the area extensively. I provided some maps attached, and I'll go over those really quickly here in a bit in order to help with the decision of making or adopting the new ordinance with the speed reductions. The speed limits in the area have not changed since the construction of this roadway. Since then, the area has added new residential and commercial developments in addition to three signals at 23rd and Sprague, 23rd and Freddie, and 23rd and Oxford. And I included also the year so you can get an idea of some of the development in the area and how it helps with the speed limit reduction. The speed limit reduction request comes with a favorable recommendation from the Traffic Advisory Board. The traffic staff is recommending approval of the speed limit reduction as presented from, on 23rd Street from State Highway 107 to Dove Avenue. I included a map that shows the existing speed limits and also the proposed speed limits. That's the first map that you will see. The next set of maps are showing the traffic accidents along that same limit from 107 to Dove, and it's for 2024. It also shows speeds, average speed, the highest speed along that segment, and also the cars surveyed to get those average speeds. At this time, I'll entertain any questions that you all might have.
They're not drastic, but they're good. Little reduction. I'm in favor of it.
Why?
Yes, I'm in favor.
I'll, I'll just echo that in August, we adopted Division Zero Plan in an effort to save lives, and we know that reducing speed limits reduces the amount or the severity of a crash. So if you're going, let's say, 30 miles an hour versus 50 miles an hour, the likelihood of you getting hurt increases if you're going 50 miles an hour versus 30 miles an hour. This area has a lot of residential, and it's also growing on 23rd Street. One thing that we do see is a lot of the accidents that happen are left turn conflicts. This area doesn't have any medians, and so that also doesn't help the cause. And you can see it from the data.
You had me at Vision Zero.
Vision Zero, yes.
Well, thank you for that. I just want, you know, people are listening and they're, you mentioned 50 to 30. No, no. Put the, or say what we're changing because they're very, very slight changes.
Yes, it really is.
Five mile an hour changes.
And it's gradual, they're stepping it down, you're not, it's not-
Right. The closer you get to the core of the city, the slower the, or the lower the speed of it.
Yes.
But it's, again, the difference between 5 and 10 miles per hour, that's it.
And when's this change?
As soon as we adopt the ordinance, we'll let Techside know. Techside will go out there and change the traffic signs as soon as the ordinance gets executed.
Excellent. But I think we also need to make sure that our PD is a little more lax till everybody understands what's going on.
Yeah, but it's, it's only from Dove to 107 on 23rd Street, right?
Correct.
Excellent. I hear a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item B, 4B.
Mayor, item 4B is providing, an ordinance providing approval of the program year 2526, Annual Action Plan for Use of CDPG and Home Funds. I know that our Grants Department is here, along with the Community Development Advisory Committee, who worked hard on developing this plan and look forward to you adopting it.
Good evening. With me today are some members of our Community Development Advisory Board, and the Board Chair, Ms. Erica Ivan-Mijia, will be presenting the item for you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Erica Ivan-Mijia, and I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Community Development Advisory Council. Joining me today are several dedicated members of our board who have worked diligently throughout this process. The agenda item before you pertains to the approval of the fiscal year 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan. The important document outlines our board's recommendations for the allocation of funds under the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Programs. These federal programs are critical tools in helping our community meet housing and develop, development needs, particularly for those most, for our most vulnerable residents. As you may know, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development permits these funds to be used for a range of eligible activities, including construction, public services, and program administration. This year, our board reviewed 42 funding applications from local organizations and agencies, with a combined request totaling nearly $4.6 million. However, a total amount available for distribution was significantly less, only $2.1 million. To break that down a little bit further, we received approximately $4.4 million in requests for construction and housing-related projects, yet only $1 million were available to award in that category. In the area of public or social services, we received $235,000 in requests and thankfully had $241,000 to allocate, allowing us to meet the majority of those needs. For the Home Program, we had just over $502,000 available designated to support new homeownership opportunities. Unfortunately, this year, no funds were awarded under the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, which typically supports services for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. In making our recommendations, the board undertook a thorough and transparent review process. We held multiple public hearings and engaged in consultations with the city department staff. Each proposal was carefully evaluated based on several key factors, including the availability of recaptured funds, the quality and completeness of submitted reports, the amount of clients who would be served, and the type of activity proposed. Our goal was always, has always been to recommend projects that will have the greatest impact and serve the most pressing needs within our community. On behalf of the Community Development Advisory Council, I would not, I would like to extend our sincere appreciation to the mayor and city commissioners for entrusting us with the responsibility of participating in the CDPG citizen participation process. We take this role very seriously and are honored to support initiatives that enhance the quality of life for residents of McAllen. We are proud of the work we've done and the recommendations we've presented to you today. Should you have any questions or any further information regarding our decisions, we would be more than happy to provide anything, any clarification. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Oh, you're doing a real good job.
Good job.
And I wish we had more money. I wish we could get more money from the federal government, but it, you all did, you know, what you were supposed to do, and we reviewed it, and we'll try to get some more money next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do, guys. Very much in favor of CDPG Action Plan.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Did we bring any DoubleTree cookies? I just thought I'd throw that out.
Just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4C.
Mayor, item 4C is providing, an ordinance is providing for adoption of Sheri Land Water Supply Corporation utility buyout areas, number 7 and number 8. Mark Vega from MPU is here to present the item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager. I'd just like to first thank CDPG as well. CDPG has been very, very good to McAllen Public Utility, and I just applaud their efforts and I thank them for that. In your packet, the last page of your packet, you will see, I don't think that's, is it? Okay, in the last page of this item, you'll see an exhibit where McAllen Public Utility recently purchased two areas from Sheri Land Water Supply Corporation, and it's typical, this is buyout 7 and 8. Standard, every time the MPU buys a certain area from Sheri Land, they pay, those residents will pay Sheri Land Water Supply Corporation water rates until that area is reimbursed and compensated for, and then they'll revert to McAllen Public Utility rates. So it's the same thing here. This is northwest McAllen. This is at the northwest, northwest area of Ware Road and Trenton, about 76 acres. If you have, I have a different exhibit here on my, on my monitor, but if you have that last page, it's about, I'm sorry, 176 acres, and all of that shaded area, I'm sorry, the area bordered in the black line, Sheri Land Water Supply Corporation buyout 7 and 8, will maintain Sheri Land Water Supply Corporation water rates. When that area is funded, it will revert to McAllen Public Utility rates.
This is something that we've practiced, you know, for, for years and years and years, and so that our ratepayers are not subsidizing the new areas. So eventually, within, you know, some years, when we get reimbursed through, I guess, all of the charges that we will have, there is some areas that, that need development, that will be developed because, you know, there'll be access to, to the McAllen Public Utility. So I, I think it'll, that area will grow. Within years, they'll, they'll be-
How long will it take for that?
They'll be getting POB rates.
Well, that's a good point that Mr. Commissioner Aguirre makes because, you know, the question that you asked, Commissioner, how long will it take? It really depends on the development in that area because as developers develop in that area, they reimburse, there's a reimbursement for that buyout. So the quicker that area develops, the quicker it's, it's completely compensated for. So the slower, but all of that is undeveloped area. Matter of fact, we have two developers already in that area, so that will help it, the payback faster.
Any questions?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item 5.
You can't see the rates? Look at the rates at Sheri Land Water Supply compared to our rates. We're around like 25 to 30% lower.
Right, absolutely.
Lower.
Lower.
Mayor, item 5A is a resolution authorizing my office to establish recreation equipment rental rates, camping rates for Camp McAllen commensurate with-
When does it open?
About 10 days from now. So we'll have the ribbon cutting this week, and it should open the following Tuesday.
I hear a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item 6A.
Mayor, item 6A is the request of Craig Garinway to consider a sign variance to, to his development.
Okay. This property is located at 4,320 Nolana Avenue on the north side of Nolana, just between North 29th and North 34th. The property is Zone C3, and the plat is scheduled to be, get recorded under the Park at Nolana subdivision. The applicant is proposing to place two pylon signs on Lot 3 and 4 with a total height of 30 feet, and each sign will have a total square footage of 252 square feet. This will allow for the seven lots to advertise. Staff recommends approval of the request since this would reduce the number of pylon signs along Nolana Avenue.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I hear a second?
I need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, next item.
Mayor, item, Omar, you want to go ahead?
Yes, this property is located at 7701 North 29th Street, just north of Trenton Road, and is Zoned R1. The property is undergoing the subdivision process and is required to pay escrows for the existing street. North 29th is paved road with improvements. Customer has extended the water line. This one lot subdivision is under the name of Georgia Subdivision, and of course, they're requesting not to pay the escrow amount. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of July 8th, the board voted approval of the variance request.
Questions?
This is one house, and this is an art deal proportionate, would be very, very expensive. And it's, I mean, it's already developed, 29th Street is fully developed and everything. I'd make a-
I was gonna say, what do you, what would, they'd be escrowing for improvements that are already made?
Correct.
Yes.
For reimbursements.
That's why I don't, I don't see it.
Oh, to the city?
But it's a huge reimbursement.
Even for this small property? What does it calculate out to you?
It's about, right under $10,000, $9,671. And she's already paid to extend the water lines. I think that might have run to about $35,000.
What's the frontage on 29th?
It's only about 50 feet, 50 to 60 feet. I think it was 50 feet, I forgot. Yes, it's 50 feet. Yeah, it's under 60. So it's right at the minimum 50 feet requirement. So it's just a one-lot subdivision for, she's going to build a house for her granddaughter.
I'm making motion for option number one.
You said 50 feet?
Yes.
A little more.
I think it's a little more.
Just a single family.
All right, so let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
So there's two, three oversight homes across the street. I don't have the names other than what I'm looking at on the diagram. La Homma, La Lomita Heights, Phase 2, La Lomita Heights, subdivision number 3. I mean, I don't mean to create more work, but I imagine when they built their homes, they escrowed money for their segments.
Or they might have-
The Curver daughter and-
Correct.
Say it again?
Or they might have asked for a variance like they did, like they did for Fresno and Peking a few, a few weeks ago. So it's just one of those common ones, it's just a one-lot subdivision, they usually ask for variance.
So to thread the conversation that we just had on an item with the MPU and the CNN and acquiring and reimbursing, so that way, the, the users of the Sheri Land Water are burning, or placing a burden on the citizens now, means most of the citizens in McAllen who either bought their home or developed their home have paid into that infrastructure.
Correct.
And at least my recall, recollection of a variance, if it, financial hardship is not a criterion to be considered. So can someone explain to me the hardship?
There's none.
Other than financial?
Correct.
Is there one?
There is.
Commissioner, the statute has changed now to allow the consideration of financial hardship. That statute was amended in 2021. You are correct that before, financial hardship was not allowed to be considered. And then when we're looking at this, this is a variance to the subdivision ordinance, so it's not a variance to the- to determine whether it's appropriate to grant this variance or not.
I think if, kind of like, if, if you are developing for, for profit, okay, it's totally different than what you're, in this case, this is a five-lane highway, this isn't a, just a two-lainer, that your reimbursement will be so much less, and this is one residential home. This is a whole thoroughfare, and that's why it's so expensive.
Well, do I hear a motion to approve?
You have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, managers report?
We have some secret advisor advisory board appointment opportunities.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commission. We've got two items before you. One is for advisory board appointments, and the second one is for the boards and committees for elected officials. For board appointments, I have received nominations for two boards. For the Traffic Commission Board, Mark Murray nominated by Commissioner Samora, and also to the Traffic Board, Norbek Mohinta nominated by Commissioner Castillo. And I've also received nominations to the Keep McAllen Beautiful Board. Commissioner Samora nominated Laurel McClish, Commissioner Haddad, Anne Fordesque, and Commissioner Pepe, cabeza de vaca, Marla Sandoval.
A motion to approve?
Remove?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Commissioner, commission was providing item 7B the year-to-date tax collection reports. If there are questions, I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
Right, and the, the second item was to the boards and committees. I believe Commissioner Pepe de Vaca is stepping down from the Boys Club, and you've got a nomination to.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rudy Castillo for the Chamber Board.
For the Chamber?
Yeah.
No, for the, I thought it was for the Boys Club, and you wanted it to be on the McAllen Chamber.
No, no, no. I'm stepping down from McAllen Chamber, and I'm, I would like to appoint Rudy Castillo for the Chamber.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you. And Kelly, I apologize, I hadn't seen you.
No need to apologize.
Do we have any questions regarding?
She's here to answer all your questions, Mayor.
Do y'all have any questions regarding the Lincoln Tax Report?
No.
No?
Mr. Lincoln.
Sorry, Kelly.
Next time, wave or something.
No, we have very little.
Thank you so much.
They're, they're doing a great job for us, Mayor. We appreciate their effort. They, they stay in very close contact with City Hall, and I know that Becky Grimes, I just wanted to mention on this item, is not here today. She lost her father suddenly over the weekend, and so our thoughts and prayers are with her tonight. But Kelly, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Kelly.
Appreciate it.
Likewise.
Future agenda items? Future agenda items?
No, right now.
Nothing? Then let's go to executive session.
Mayor, with regards to item 8A and 8B, no action is required. With regards to item 8C, I recommend that the board entertain a motion to authorize the city attorney and city manager to proceed as described in executive session.
Can I ask, I think, one of the items on 8B?
A motion to approve?
No move.[1744.11]